Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barb Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President. It's great to see so many people here. We sometimes take time at the beginning of our meeting to recognize citizens, recognize accomplishments in our city, and today we have a unique citizen of the city of Minneapolis to recognize. So I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Lisa Goodman and Councilmember Cam Gordon.
I'm also going to invite Arvind Fraser to come up and Thompson Gupta because it's my unique honor and privilege to be part of honoring Tom for all his great work. And it's also great to see so much of the community here, and I think that you're all here because you recognize, like I do, the significant impact that Tom has had on our city and on our lives and in the politics in this state, I would say. Tom has been a real role model for me and a mentor, just the way he lives his life, the way he treats others, one of the most decent, committed, dedicated people who lives with such integrity. He has clear values and he has a clear vision of what he wants his community to be, his world to be, and himself, and he lives his life true to that in every way. I've known Tom not as long as some of you, I'm sure. He's here mostly because he's retiring and then going through a transition. He's run a drugstore in the Prospect Park neighborhood for 24 years or so, 43 years? Sorry about that. Twisting some numbers there. So, and while he's done that, he's also been a real hub, a meeting place. So I first discovered Tom when I went there for one of his discussion groups. I think it was on a Thursday night, and we gathered around the stove, and we talked about the issues of the day. So it's wonderful that we're here, and we're going to take a little time to honor Tom, and we're going to declare this day, January 16, 2015, Thompson Gupta Day in the city of Minneapolis. And we drafted a resolution, and I'm going to let my colleague, Lisa Goodman, read that.
I want to thank Councilmember Gordon for partnering with me on making this happen. I just want to note that in the 18 years I've been on the city council, I've never once ever brought forward a day to honor anyone. I feel like there are many people in the city who should have the opportunity to be honored, and so when there are so many, how do you pick out one? Until now, and I will say, I had the good fortune of being contacted by two gentlemen who now live in Hawaii, Eric Anderson and Roger Beck, who I didn't know, and we had a long email conversation back and forth about our memories, about working with Tom. Those of you who know me know that Tom and I met in 1989, 1989-90, when Paul Wellstone was just an idea, when he was working at Carlton College, meeting with people in the community to talk about running for the United States Senate. And at that time, I was 22 years old, and I was Paul's fundraising director, and the only person really willing to help me raise money for Paul was Tom. And in fact, I thought to myself, I don't know how we're ever going to win a U.S. Senate race with $5 contributions. And Tom said, there'll be a lot of $5 contributions, but they'll be from people who will vote and people who will matter, and the rest is pretty much history. So Tom and I go fairly far back, but not as far back as many people in this room. So I know many people in this room, like my former colleague, Councilmember Zerbi, who's here today, and State Representative Phyllis Cahn and others will probably have many more memories. But we had asked Arvind to be here today because of her long relationship with Tom. And so what we're going to do is read the resolution and ask Arvind to say a few words, and we're very, very honored that you're here today, and then ask Tom to talk a little bit about what's next in his life. Many of you know about his project for the common man, and we want to give him an opportunity to talk about it. So, honoring Tom Sengupta. Tom purchased Schneider Drugstore on University Avenue Southeast in Prospect Park in 1972. And whereas Tom stocked the store with hard-to-find items nestled on the shelves along with cold remedies and toys, and passed out pennies for gumballs to neighborhood children. And whereas Tom dedicates himself to the improvement of people's lives, filling customers' prescriptions safely and economically, double-checking drug interactions, and striving to meet the financial needs of his customers. And whereas not only does Tom conduct his core business with ethics and with care, he's a valued member of the Prospect Park community, supporting neighborhood organizations and events by his presence and financially, including the Pratt Community School, the Prospect Park East River Road Improvement Association, and the annual Pratt Ice Cream Social. And whereas Tom's drugstore has been famous for the signs and quotes displayed inside and out, including one of Tom's personal favorite quotes from the late Senator Paul Wellstone, "Politics is about the improvement of people's lives." And whereas Tom lives this quote, having hosted over two decades of organized political and social discussions and debates, always conducted with reason and civility, no matter how passionately held or expressed the differences of opinion may be. And whereas Tom is hanging up his pharmacist jacket to pursue his 20-plus-year dream of making a monument to the common man. And whereas a model of the monument, made of wood about the size of a card table, was unveiled formally in October, and finding a site and funding are amongst Tom's most pressing goals. And whereas legendary philosopher pharmacist Tom Sengupta will be sorely missed by the counter of his Schneider Drugstore, but will continue to be active in our community and work to complete the monument to the common man. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Minneapolis and the mayor and city council that in recognition of his outstanding contributions to the Prospect Park community and the quality of life in the city of Minneapolis, January 16, 2015, is hereby declared Tom Sengupta Day in the city of Minneapolis.
Well, we know the city council has business to do, and so I am deeply honored to be here to honor Tom in this distinguished building and this room and this distinguished man beside me. Much has been said, or virtually all is said here, but I will say a couple of things. Number one, I think Prospect Park was evacuated this morning, where you all are. But Tom is our southeast treasure, who is now known to the whole city and beyond for not only his wonderful political discussions that, of course, I've been at a number of times, but Tom does two, I'll say three other things. One, one of my good neighbors, who I hate to say, I don't think ever votes, just extols Tom. So it is not just among us politicians that Tom is known and considered a treasurer. Second, I don't know, Tom has two daughters, I believe, and one of them, I'm watching Law and Order one day, and there's her first name, Sengupta, and I knew it was Tom's daughter. She's been a writer for that, and I think continues her writing and maybe still is writing for it. And so all of us turned out here to honor this great man, who the third thing I will say is, well, he helped me quit smoking. Yeah, she smoked. He sold me nicotine gum.
He moved to a non-smoking building.
Anyhow, he dispenses advice along with his filling prescriptions. So I am absolutely delighted and honored, as I said, to be here to honor Tom. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks a lot for this great honor. Thanks a lot for coming. And, you know, Lisa, it brings back lots of memories after the benign neglect of '70 and then greed of the '80 when Paul came to forefront. You know, it rekindled our passion, our hopes, and, you know, and our all kinds of things that we can change this society, we can change this world, and I still have that in me. I'm 75 years old, I'm still holding on to that, thanks to Paul, thanks to Humphrey, and that was our Camelot in our own way. You know, thanks to people like Harvey Silk, Dietrich Bonhoeffer, White Rose Kids, I still have those passions in me that we can change this world. And my next project, and that's going to, you know, help me to go through all the surgery I have to go through and so forth, and also my family, my wife is here, and my sister-in-law is here, and we have great-grandkids, and our daughters are not here, they'll be here for my surgery. But another project I'm working on is the changing the norm of society. You know, we see all through the history of mankind, when society is under duress, we always let the people empower us with the agenda. This happened in Hitler's Germany, it happened in the Red Scare time on Joe McCarthy era, it happened in Vietnam War time with Gulf of Tonkin Resolution. Though I have tremendous love for Lyndon Johnson too because of his work on civil rights issues and Voting Rights Bill, because one time he said to Richard Russell, this is the right thing to do, and that was probably his finest moment of his presidency. But again, this happened in September 9th, September 11th, you know, that's, we have to change that. When the society is under duress, we like to see the common folks, and I have tremendous faith in common folks and goodness of people and intellect of people, of common folks. They're the ones who should change this norm, they should question their premise before they said that. And that's how we can change our society, not giving the power to the powerful. When the society is under duress, we should question their premise. And if they can prove it to us, then we should give them the power, otherwise, no, we should stop that at that time. And we are talking with Augsburg, and Elaine is here probably, you can talk a little bit about that. And if we get established the first seminar, I like to do that, you know, as a society as a whole, we never came to grips with our history of slavery. We have to understand that. What, we like to have a national conference, the cities can do that, you know, have conferences, joining with other cities. Unless we understand that, we'll never, you know, go over these things that are happening in Missouri or in New York City or even in our time. If we don't understand what happened, our history of slavery and how we treated the Native Americans, we're going to make this mistake over and over and again and again and again. Cities can take a leading role on that, have conference, and talk to other cities and have conference, and ultimately take it to Washington and talk, you know, have people in the panel like the elders, like Congressman Lewis or President Carter, and lots of scholars, and come up with something, like South Africa did. And we need to do that, and it's not safe for the other waves of non-white immigrants who will be coming here, they will go through the same thing, and it's not good for the soul of our society. We have to come to grips with that. And also, African-Americans are not the majority of the minority anymore. This issue will be in the back burner for another 200 years, we cannot afford to do that. We have to come to grips with that for the safety of our policemen and safety of our minorities in this society, we have to do it, and cities can take a great leadership on that. And joining with other cities, we should be able to do it. And we'll have all kinds of seminars, and Elaine, I'd like to talk about that, how individuals change the history of mankind, you know, and the other issues, why young people are not interested in politics anymore. You know, there's so many other issues affecting the society and the world, we can't change those. And this is also from Paul and Humphrey and Dietrich Bonhoeffer, this is, I still have that in me. So thank you very much, thanks a lot. I, hopefully, you guys will take a leadership on this issue about our history of slavery and how to come to grips with that. If you don't understand that, I think this, we're going to make these mistakes over and over and again and again. We can talk all kinds of things, we have to understand that before we can solve this. Thank you very much.
Yes, let's just indulge us a little bit further, because there might be a way that we can help take action and build on what Tom said.
Thank you. I'm Elaine Eschebacker, Director of the Sabo Center at Augsburg College. And when I first heard about the changing the norm of society project, I left that meeting with a very heavy responsibility, not heavy in the sense that it was a burden, but heavy in the sense that I was being entrusted with something really important. And I know a lot of people in this room feel that way too. So we are honored as a Sabo Center at Augsburg to be a part of this project, and thank you, Tom, for your trust, and whether you're here or in California, you will always have a place at the table. Thank you.
Now I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We are all present this morning. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and I have a motion to amend the agenda. We had a mistake in our addressing of the closed council session that'll be held after our meeting, and the amendment changes the address of the suit from 201 West Broadway LLC and Master Properties and substitutes the matter of the city of Minneapolis versus Lake and Knox LLC. So with that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. On the agenda then, as amended, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 5, 2014, the adjourned meeting of December 10, 2014, and the regular meeting of December 12, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Next, we have referrals of petitions, communications, and reports to the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first committee to report is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. We have seven items that the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward for approval this morning. They include our normal liquor business and gambling license applications. Item number two is a license settlement conference recommendation. Item three is approving some recommendations to a food truck. Item four, our business license operating conditions, as is item five. Item six is accepting approximately $750,000 from Met Council for local housing incentive grants. These projects are Broadway Flats, the City of Lake's Community Land Trust, the Hawthorne Eco Village, and Mill City Quarter. And the last item is the authorization of a contract with Hargraves and Associates to begin the design and public engagement process with regard to East Downtown Commons. With that, I'll move items one through seven for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Oh, Glidden, okay. I thought you said Goodman. I'm sorry. Aye.
Yang.
Aye on all items, no on seven.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for item number seven with 12 ayes and one nay.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing four items forward for approval. The first is authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals for the 2015 One Minneapolis Fund and the execution of all necessary associated contracts, and authorizing the Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission to review the proposals for funding from the 2015 One Minneapolis Fund and make recommendations to the city council on funding awards. The second item is concurring with the recommendations of the mayor on the following appointments and reappointments to the Youth Violence Prevention Executive Committee for two-year terms expiring December 31, 2016. Fred Bryan, Philippe Cunningham, Chief John Harrington, Isaiah Hudson, Robert Littlegren, David Matthews, Nick Williams, Tracine Ashbury, Titelejo Vidiaco, Eloisa Ecarvez, Cam Gordon, Barbara McMorris, Eugene Ruckapartin, Vijay Smith, Daryl Young, and Shane Zane. The third item is accepting a estimated revenue in the amount of $25,000 from Ucare to address environmental factors affecting children with asthma. And the final item is accepting $186,000 from Ucare for the 2015 operating expenses for the Ucare Skyway Senior Center. And I will move all four items.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report, and that committee is chaired by Council Vice President Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item today, it is a major one, it is adoption of our 2015 legislative agenda and our 2015 policy positions, and so I'd move this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Anyone want to discuss that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item today, it is a major one, it is adoption of our 2015 legislative agenda and our 2015 policy positions, and so I'd move this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Anyone want to discuss that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee has four items to forward. Item number one is granting an appeal filed of the decision by the Zoning Board of Adjustment to deny an application for invariance for floor area ratio on a home at 2,000 Fremont Avenue South, and the findings of fact are included in your packets today. Item number two is to deny an appeal on behalf of McDonald's for a decision by the Zoning Board of Adjustment regarding two signs, or several signs there on University Avenue Northeast. Item number three is to appoint three people to three-year terms to the Heritage Preservation Commission. And item number four is to appoint eight people to two-year appointments to the Minneapolis Arts Commission, and I will forward those four items.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report, and that committee is chaired by Council Vice President Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item today, it is a major one, it is adoption of our 2015 legislative agenda and our 2015 policy positions, and so I'd move this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Anyone want to discuss that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Resolutions, and we have a number of honorary resolutions, and I would just remind people that the lighting of the 35W Bridge for a particular issue requires a city council resolution. So we have a resolution recognizing Icing Smiles Day, another resolution recognizing wishes and more, a resolution recognizing the National MS Society MS Awareness Week in Minneapolis, the honorary resolution honoring Tom Sengupta Sengupta that we read before the council meeting, and an honorary resolution recognizing February 6, 2015 as National Red Day in the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on those resolutions? Seeing none, a motion to approve them would be in order.
So moved.
There are second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Under new business, the first item we have is the Clean Energy Partnership Board appointments, and this is a passage of a resolution appointing Mayor Betsy Hodges, Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden, Councilmember Kevin Reich, and City Coordinator Spencer Cronk as members of the Clean Energy Partnership Board and designating Councilmember Cam Gordon as an alternate member of the board. Any discussion on that appointment? Councilmember Kano?
Thank you, Ms. President, or, sorry.
Item number three is to appoint three people to three-year terms to the Heritage Preservation Commission. And item number four is to appoint eight people to two-year appointments to the Minneapolis Arts Commission, and I will forward those four items.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have resolutions, and we have a number of honorary resolutions, and I would just remind people that the lighting of the 35W Bridge for a particular issue requires a City Council Resolution. So, we have a resolution recognizing Icing Smiles Day, another resolution recognizing Wishes and More, a resolution recognizing the National MS Society MS Awareness Week in Minneapolis, the honorary resolution honoring Tom Sengupta that we read before the council meeting, and an honorary resolution recognizing February 6, 2015 as National Wear Red Day in the City of Minneapolis. Any discussion on those resolutions? Seeing none, a motion to approve them would be in order.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that carries. Under new business, the first item we have is the Clean Energy Partnership Board Appointments, and this is a passage of a resolution appointing Mayor Betsy Hodges, Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden, Councilmember Kevin Reich, and City Coordinator Spencer Cronk as members of the Clean Energy Partnership Board, and designating Councilmember Cam Gordon as the alternate, as an alternate member of the board. Any discussion on that appointment? Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Miss President, or, sorry, I'm like thinking I'm in a movie here. So, I wanted to speak on this a little bit because I've been having a lot of conversations with our colleagues about this very important appointment and a very brand-new initiative that really puts Minneapolis at the forefront of environmental sustainability discussions nationally, and I would argue internationally as well. So, it's a great feat that we've accomplished achieving this today, this Clean Energy Partnership with two very big organizations that provide services to our community members. And so, I've met with a lot of people on this effort, and most importantly, a lot of my Ward residents care about this issue. Ward 9 is the home of the Minneapolis Energy Options Campaign, and where a lot of the energy sustainability advocates, organizers, leaders, thinkers, opinion shapers reside and make Minneapolis a better place to live, not only for us, but for the seven generations that come after us. So, for that, we really wanted to figure out how to make sure that this Clean Energy Partnership was set up in a way that could involve many of the council members who wanted to be a part of it. So, I'm happy to be supporting this today, and I'm supporting it because I've had discussions with Councilmember Reich, with Councilmember Gordon, definitely Councilmember Bender, who also cares about these issues, and worked a lot with Councilmember Jacob Frye, to figure out how can we really shape this in a way that allows a lot of the energy discussions that are happening on the ground and with the community to really have a voice and a presence in this paradigm and this new organizational structure that we're proposing. So, we, I think, are very happy with moving forward with this slate to try to make sure that folks can continue to shape this discussion in a way that truly elevates Minneapolis in not only words, you know, not only the things that we're saying in our printed materials and through the actions that we take here, but also in the initiatives that we hope to roll out. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that we've spent considerable time discussing this since the Budget Committee adjourned last December, and I appreciate, I appreciate everyone's time on that, especially during the holiday when there was a lot of texting back and forward, a lot of conversations had when people were home with their kids. So, from my perspective, I just hope that we can continue these conversations and that we can continue to advance the progressive voice that happens in the environmental justice arena within our city government as well as in the community. So, I thank also the community folks who are here today to continue to support the rollout of this process and who are helping us to watch it and to really take care of it fully so that we can make sure that we don't continue to exploit Mother Earth, but that we actually build a system that respects the life being that holds us on this planet.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll keep my comments really short. I just want to thank Councilmember Gordon for being very classy throughout this process. Thank you.
Any further discussion then on the appointments? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order?
Second.
All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Notice of Intent, and Councilmember Frye gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to housing, maintenance code, amending regulations for hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments. That notice is given. Councilmember Frye also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to licenses and business regulations, hotels and bed and breakfast facilities, amending regulations for hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments. That notice is given. Councilmember Frye also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of the ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, amending regulations for hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments. That notice is given. Councilmember Bender gives notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting, regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, revising provisions relating to off-street parking. That notice is given. Are there any announcements this morning? And I've lost my screen here. Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to speak briefly about the resolution regarding Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week.
Oh, why don't you go ahead, I probably should have asked.
Dan Anderson, a local resident and the Public Policy Manager for the Upper Midwest Chapter of the MS Society, which is a national organization, brought this to my attention recently, so I'm pleased to bring forth a resolution today proclaiming March 5th, Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Day in Minneapolis. This is a terrible disease, it affects more than 10,000 people in Minnesota, which is one of the highest rates in the country. It still has no cure. So, those who are close to an individual that suffers from this frequently crippling disease understands the toll that it can take, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Anderson for making this ask of my office, and thank my colleagues for agreeing to co-author this resolution and for their support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a little tip-off from our staff during the meeting that I should talk about, I think, a really exciting project that they have rolled out, it's called the Community Indicators Project, and it's a way for both staff throughout our city enterprise and the broader public to weigh in on how should Minneapolis gauge its success. So, it is going to result in how do we start to measure and benchmark the things that we hear from those who are affected by the city enterprise believe are most important. So, if you go to the City of Minneapolis webpage, right in the right-hand column